This meeting is ordered by the Cedarburg Board of Education, November 16th, 2016. This meeting has been noticed in the district and additional copies work forward to the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in the place of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Resolutions and recognitions. Adam, did you, uh...
I want to complain.
Absolutely. You walk out of school.
Good evening, board. Just here to celebrate. We had a great fall season of athletics in our arts teams, so just want to share some of those achievements with you all tonight. First, we'll congratulate the following students for their accomplishments in the National Association of Teachers of State competition. Kathryn Gwitt, first place in the musical theater category; Shelby Zhang, second place in the musical theater category; and Marguerite Manning, third place in the classical music category. Also, in the arts, in the choral department, we congratulate Nathan Conlin for honors men's choir; Emily Rush and Lily Engelberg for honors women's choir; and the WCBA state honors choir competition. These students will rehearse and perform at the state convention in January. Congratulations to the CHS band for their excellent performance and showmanship at the 2016 WSMA State Marching Band Competition on October 15th. The band members, as well as the students and parent fans, did an excellent job representing Cedarburg High School. Congratulations to the CHS jazz band who participated and performed in the Lawrence City University Jazz Festival on November 5th. They did a tremendous job of representing our high school at that competition. I'm going to skip swimming because we have the results on a separate page. Welcome back to them. Congratulations to CHS girls tennis team as well. Two doubles teams made it to state, state qualifiers, and although they did not win, they definitely represented us well. To have two teams there was quite impressive for us. Congratulations to the boys soccer team. They claimed the regional championship this year and had a tough loss, dealing with some adversity and injuries as they headed into the sectional finals. Congratulations to the girls volleyball team who made it to the regional championship. Close battle there as well. Just fell a little short, but they again represented us well in the regional championship. And congratulations to our co-ed cross-country team for making it to the regional championship. Annie Coburn finished fifth, qualifying her for the Division One State Meet. And again, great representation there. Our swim team had several members advance to state. On Saturday, November 12th, AEW Madison, Adriana Vila in diving; Lilly Hosack in the 200-yard individual medley; and 100-yard backstroke, Maya Novak in the 50-yard freestyle and 100-yard freestyle; Cassie Koster in the 500-yard freestyle; Erica Remington in the 100-yard breaststroke; Skylar Four in the 50-yard freestyle and 100-yard freestyle. And the results that we have that came back, they competed this Saturday, and we had six of them who achieved the state championship. Four on the team on relay and two individually. Skylar Four won the 100-yard freestyle; Lilly Hosack won the 200-yard IM; and CHS's 200-yard medley relay won consisting of Skylar Four, Lilly Hosack, Erica Remington, and Maya Novak. The team took fourth overall. Skylar has also just recently officially signed to swim at Notre Dame next year, which is an impressive feat in itself. So that is our accomplishments for the fall. I know that here at Cedarburg, we enjoy a lot of those celebrations, almost to the point where sometimes we come to expect them, but I just want to reiterate how tremendous an accomplishment it is. I've been in three different districts now and have been able to share zero state championships. So that tells you how rare it is. This is a cool piece for me. And just to bring it to it again, you have, not only do we have state champions in those six members, but we have one student who set a new record for the state of Wisconsin, which means not only was she better than any girl that day, but she's better than the thousands of girls that swam that event, you know, in the history of Wisconsin state swimming. Truly, truly impressive accomplishment. She actually took the state record away from one of our graduates last year. So that's a fun piece for Cedarburg. So a great fall season for us and very proud of our students and our coaches for the accomplishments.
Thank you. Good evening. All right, moving down, the consent agenda.
Board members, before you, you have the consent agenda, the rest of approval of the minutes in October 26th, 2016 board meeting. Also, the financial statement, which includes the summary of the consent and check register and check detail, and also the personnel report, which Mr....
Thank you. This evening, before you, we have one educator retirement request from Jill Jansen, also a resignation request from Karen Duser, both effective at the end of this school year. And support staff, we've seen two departures, Kathleen Hansen and April Eltesser, and we have added Alyssa Stockin. We have to approve the personnel changes.
Hold. Second. Motion second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carries. Thank you. Reports and notifications.
Thank you. This evening, we're excited to have Westlon Elementary School here. Katie Norris, the principal, will take the podium and introduce her guest. This is part of our ongoing series of the year of having each of schools present at a board meeting to highlight some of the wonderful areas that they'd like to celebrate academically or in other areas of their school. And Katie is going to spend the next 10 minutes highlighting some of the wonderful pieces that she has to walk through with us. Katie.
Feel free to use the steps tool, friends, or not, all right? Good evening. Today, we're here to talk about Character Day. Character Day was a new initiative this year at Westlon, and I don't really even need to spend time talking about it. I'm going to leave that to my family here, my Westlon family. We have Steph Emmer, Colleen Huber, and Kelly Lox, three of our fantastic teachers, and Jack Roosevelt and Anna Moiler, two of our wonderful students. So I'm going to turn it over to them, and they will be open for questions at the end. This is Huber.
Well, Katie said, "We're here to talk about our journey in character education and to share our most recent achievement with our Character Day." Just to give you a quick background, a quick history, we have to travel all the way back to 2014 when I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC to earn or to receive our national promising practice. When I was there, I got to meet Barbara Boomer, who is a well-known character education pioneer. She has inspired me, and I came back thinking, "I wish everybody had that experience that I had." I also got to network with different people who are devoted to character education in schools as well. So when we came back, we affiliated ourselves with wisconsincharacter.org, and we've been networking with them for the last two years. And we have had, for the last two years, been honored with the distinction of Wisconsin Emerging School of Character. So as you know with any networks, you kind of get the inside scoops on different activities that are coming about. And so this is where I found out about International Day of Character. And so when I received the email, I emailed Katie saying, "This is my next bucket list item. This is what I want to do," and she happily obliged my desire to move forward. As you know probably, the Westlon staff is devoted and always goes above and beyond in anything that embraces respectfulness and gratitude and generosity. So it was easy for me to get Kelly and Steph on board and move forward with our plans. As we were looking at the international Character Day, the activities had to do with videos, and we decided that probably wasn't best for our students, so we adapted it for our own school. And as they say, the rest is history. Our Character Day was bigger and better than what we could have even dreamed and imagined, and so we're excited to share with you what that day entailed. So Kelly's going to tell you about that.
So our story continues to present day. In this past summer, a few staff members had the good fortune of being able to attend the Wisconsin Character Education Conference at Albano College. Our experience at this conference was both powerful and empowering. Without a doubt, it ignited inspiration and fueled our desire to infuse character into the fabric of our classroom within our school. So after attending the conference, coming, Steph and I wrapped our brains together, and we determined that service learning was a key piece missing from Westlon, and that was going to be our focus. We knew that Character Day needed to be interactive and include something that reached the community as a whole, as well as every classroom within our school. So at Westlon, as Kelly mentioned, we're already doing a tremendous job with teaching the character pillars at morning pods. However, we wanted our students to know that there is more to character than just these nine pillars that we worked on throughout the entire year. So what we did is we went on to the International Character Day site, and we chose a trait for each grade level, being cognizant of the developmental needs of all of our students. So the traits that we emphasized were in 4K kindness and respect; kindergarten, creativity; first grade, curiosity; second grade, gratitude; third grade, love of learning; fourth grade, leadership; and fifth grade, optimism. And it can't be stressed enough that the intentions of this special day were for both the teachers and the students to be proud of their hard work, their determination and drive, their passion and perseverance, and their quest for the best. It taught our school as a whole the importance of working together and coming together and make a positive change within our world. Character Day was a true promise of how character is impacted by thinking, feeling, and doing. So with that, I introduced Mr. Jeff Roosevelt and Ms. Anna Moiler, two of Westlon's finest fourth grade students, to share their experience with Character Day.
Hi, guys. I'm glad you're all here today. Now, I'd love to share you this lovely speech that this poet and this prose came up with. Character Day at Westlon was so much fun. Some of the things we got to do were decorate grocery bags, grow pig leggy, make calls for sick and elderly people, play a game called bumper cars in the gym with the other fourth graders, play a game called Who's the Leader?, have an assembly in the gym, and a fun video at the end of the day. If I had to choose my favorite activity, I would say that playing bumper cars in the with the rest of the fourth graders was the most exciting. Everyone had a partner, and one person had to close their eyes while the other had to direct or drive them by placing hands on their shoulders and tapping them in a similar way. No talking was allowed. We had to drive around the gym without passing to other people and stay in a room. It was hard because there were so many threats and not allowed speaks. We really had to work together and trust that the driver would do a good job and be a good leader. Sorry to say, there were some questions, but everyone had a good time from the beginning. The other game we played in our class was Who's the Leader? A classmate was chosen to go out in the hallway and close his eyes. The rest of the class is in a circle, in a classroom, and a leader is picked. The person in the hallway comes back in the room. The leader is doing actions that change, and the class has to follow along. Everyone knows who the leader is except for the person that was out in the hall. That person has three guesses to choose. Who is the leader? The class. On our Character Day, each grade had a character to look on. If you couldn't tell, fourth grade works on leadership. A good leader is competent and motivated, but still be a good friend and a good listener. Character Day at Westlon was really cool and fun. I hope we get to do it again someday.
Great job.
Hi, I'm Anna Moiler, and I'm a fourth grader at Westlon Elementary School. A few weeks ago, we had a day full of fun games that were related to some character traits. Each grade had a different trait to work on throughout the day. For example, first graders worked on curiosity. We as fourth graders did the trait leadership. A couple of the activities for the fourth graders included Magic Carpet and Bumper Cars. Magic Carpet is a cooperative game where a group of students try to flip a towel over while all standing near it and without stepping off. Bumper Cars is also a cooperative game where a student acts as a car with their eyes closed while another student drives the car around without talking. To direct the car's movements, the driver has to hold the car's shoulders in a certain way to turn in each direction. Both of these games helped us practice skills needed to be a leader and skills needed to be a follower. At the end of the day, we all got together in the gym to share what each class did throughout the day. We heard about activities done related to the different traits, and then we watched a video with pictures of the activities. Here's an article from the News Graphic that shows some of the different things we did on Character Day. I think this was a great learning experience for all of the students because we all got to participate, and we learned that you can show good character traits while playing fun games. Even though subjects like math and reading are really important to learn at school, I think that it is also good to learn about character traits so that we can all be more kind, friendly, and cooperative. I might forget some of my division facts, but I know I will always remember the life lessons I learned on Character Day. I hope that we can continue to have one every year.
So as Colleen mentioned before, although the three of us got the ball rolling, it was really a team effort in all of Westlon. So we picked all of the traits for each grade level, but we asked each teacher, each grade level, to come up with their own activity. And we came up with service learning projects, and it was a full day. So it wasn't just something we did in an hour or in two hours, but we really took the time to get the kids into the idea of character. So it was way above and beyond what we thought it was going to be. That afternoon showcase, I think the three of us just stood there, "This is amazing." It could have been small, but it was huge, and our service learning projects were awesome. I know Brandon was part of that. I had contacted him to see if he would be willing to take some of our Get Well cards and pass them out to patients that come to him. And our kids were pretty excited to know that they were going to make somebody's day. They loved decorating the grocery bags. That has been part of Red Ribbon Week for a long time, and we didn't do it this year for Red Ribbon Week. So we brought it back, and they had some of the cutest messages, positive messages for the community. So that was a lot of fun, too. We have PBIS at Westlon, and that's our behavior system, and that's not going to go away. But what character is for us is to try to get the kids to realize that it's important to do things and not have anything in return. PBIS is very much focused on rewards and incentives. Here's your ticket for being good. We filled up our jar, so we're going to have an assembly as a whole school. But our goal for character is that you do things because it feels good inside and you don't expect things in return. So that's hard for kids. That's really hard for kids. But the more we do it, the more we think it'll become their nature. So we do hope that Character Day will come back to Westlon, maybe even this year. We have to see. But Katie was very generous in letting us take a full day, and as Anna had said, math and reading are important. We feel this is just as important for our kids. So are there any questions?
I don't have a question, I'm just a comment to say, one of the reasons why I decided to serve on the board, or at least tried to, is because of my experience at Westlon and the outstanding educators. And stuff like this, you can't even imagine what this does for our patients. They actually take them, they read them, and they give them back so we can give them on again. And it's been pretty awesome. So thank you guys for doing it.
Thank you. The board is...
Brenda's going to be sharing our video montage from the end of our Character Day with all of you, so you will get an email if that's from Brenda.
I would like to add that, I think it's, you know, so often we focus on the math and reading and social studies and things like that. So it's great that you took the time to focus on another area of character that's so important, but something schools normally don't teach, they just don't go there, you know, it's up to other ways for kids to learn. So I appreciate you doing that. That's a great idea.
Yeah, I think doing it early is great because I think that's needed all the way through school. Perhaps this is something that we could do a little differently at different schools, perhaps I think that would help. Jack and Anna, Jack, you said that a good leader is confident and motivated. I think you're a good leader. You're pretty confident and pretty motivated. You're welcome. And, you know, I think you guys, Anna, you said good character traits, and I think you have that as well. So thank you very much for coming. That was, you guys made my night.
I also want to say to Jack and Anna, I don't know if I could get up in front of the school and make a presentation like that, so that was awesome, Jack. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So next month, board members will have another school come forward and like another presentation. It's one of the frustrated glimpses of the activities and events that occur in your school. Just a snapshot, always a very good one. Stop by, pop in. It's nice that Brandon has been brought in there. It just happened that the day that the administrators in Waco, it was during that week. And I don't know if you remember Ted, when we're walking out on the playground, you can see all the encouraging praises written on the playground in chalk.
We just said we need to do that again.
It's so positive.
How fun to come to school and see every day smiles and pretenses.
Yeah, very contagious, look wonderful, yeah. All right, thank you very much for being with us tonight, and certainly setting a bar for the next school next month.
Thank you. Thank you.
So next item, board members, there are a number of donations that I'll ask the board to approve. The first one, I recommend, I recommend the board accept a donation of $500 from CHS Fine Arts Boosters. This donation is used by Cedarburg High School's band department for the 2016/17 school year.
Move it through. Second. One of those in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carries.
Next item, I recommend that the board accept a donation of $1,000 from Allen and Sally Castellic. This donation is used by Cedarburg High School's robotics team for the 16/17 school year.
Move it through. Second. One of those in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carries.
I'd like to get in those first and seconds.
Thank you.
Next item, I recommend the board accept a donation of $500 from the Barrow Medical Foundation. This donation is used by Cedarburg High School's robotics team for the 16/17 school year.
Move it through. Second. One of those in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carries.
I recommend the board accept a donation of $500, $500 from Kenneth and Ivan Asturman and Matching Grant, or Donation I should say, of $500 from Harley-Davidson Motor Company. These donations are used for an art classic at Cedarburg High School, specifically in Julia and Yours Arts Class.
Move it through. Second. One of those in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carries.
I recommend the board accept a donation of $603.58 from McDonald's, its affiliate managed services. These funds were raised through Heart Views, a teacher-like fundraising event, and are used for faculty team building and motivation materials for the 16/17 school year.
Move it through. Second. One of those in favor?
Aye.
Against.
I recommend the board accept a donation of tools and equipment valued at approximately $2,000 from Rods and Relics Car Club. The donation is used for Cedarburg High School Autos Program for the 16/17 school year.
Move it through. Second. One of those in favor?
Aye.
Against. Motion carries.
Thank you for all those generous donations, everybody. Until it's robotic season, let's point you on the donations a little bit.
This time, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on any issue? Any issue at all? Come on down, Pat. In the past, the city attorney general issued guidance on how governmental bodies such as the school board should conduct the public comment portion of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist governmental bodies in avoiding violation of the state's open meeting laws. The essence of this guidance is that unless the topic being brought by the public is listed on that meeting's agenda, no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on a future meeting agenda whereby discussion could then be held. The reason for this guidance is not to limit open discussion, but rather to ensure that all interested parties have equal opportunity to participate in the discussions with the full school board. We on the school board encourage community input, and we want to hear from you, our constituents. However, we also take the state open meeting law seriously and will follow the guidelines outlined by the state attorney general. Therefore, an item is listed on tonight's agenda, open dialogue may occur between individual from the public and the board members. If it is not listed, the board will be limited to listening only and will not be able to respond to comments or questions. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda and you want to have a discussion regarding this topic, you are encouraged to contact the district superintendent and request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda. As always, you are also encouraged to discuss any issue with individual board members on a one-on-one basis outside of the meeting setting. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. Please note that this is a public meeting. We ask everyone to address one another with courtesy and respect that you would like to receive in return. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, and this is on the YouTube channel.
Okay.
Do you remember what you're watching tonight?
We talked for a long time. Good evening. As Pat told me, I'm the sixth district council member for the city of Cedarburg, and Jack Barnett is going to be here. He's the second, but you guys are so speedy that he didn't show up yet. And Chris, it's okay if I'm talking now versus waiting for the agenda item?
Yeah. Can you say your address?
Oh, okay, yes.
I'm in...
It's N68W5760 Bridge Commons Court in Cedarburg. Just before I get started, watching the kids just now, I was on the school board in the 90s. I sat where you sat, although we didn't often meet in the LTI. But, and I said this to Brandon, I mean, watching the kids and being involved with that portion, it was the best part of being on the board. I mean, it's very cool. I know you guys know that. Actually, I said "we," but Jack and I were here because later in the evening, you're going to be addressing a request from the council, and we just wanted to be here to, you know, let you know that it's really important to us, and we really do hope you can help us out on that. But beyond that, we wanted to express how important the excellent relationship between the district and the city is to all of us and always has been. We hope it would be possible to, and I know I've said this and I always have said this, but we hope it'll be possible to put a small group of us together to discuss the areas where we've worked cooperatively for years and how we can continue to do that going forward, which I know that, you know, that's everybody's goal. Again, I sat where you're sitting. I know at the city level and all that as well, that all of us want to provide, you know, the excellent and accessible programming for our kids, and just reiterating, we'll come forward and sit down and talk with you. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Mrs....
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? I won't say that spiel again, I like to say one. May your reports, do we have anything to report from CNN? Committee reports, do we have anything to report from P N F? Rick, on, make them there. All right. And then I believe all other committees are good. So at this point, take motion to adjourn to committee of the whole. Right down the hallway here in boardroom where we're going to talk about any mentions, L L I, can you do the math? Strategic planning base, physical education, credit options, budget development timeline, and university council requests. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn to committee of all. Second.
Motion in a second, I take care to adjourn to committee of the whole. Those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries?